Okay, good evening, it's the August twenty fourth two thousand and twenty three ZBA meeting. Ms. Gardner was not available, so she asked if I would act as the acting chair tonight, and I agreed to do so. I know that the applicants tonight were told that there are only three members. And under the law and the rules that there has to unanimous decision on any application. If there's not unanimous decision, it's it's denied. And the application be turned down, so keep that in mind. We gave everyone the opportunity to adjourn until next session where we expect to have the full body. So again, you can still do that at any time this evening. There are two matters on that are continuations, I guess first we should accept the meeting minutes from last month that they were circulated, there was actually no comments. I mean that they be accepted, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Well.
You will agree, yes, okay. So last month's meeting minutes are in fact accepted. The first continuation is five Harriman's keep. I know that the applicant is not appearing, it's really an administrative matter. At last month's we, our intent was to approve it. We had suggested or I had suggested that they didn't need a variance, in fact, they do for the record need a variance. And based on the calculations of the entire development, we had agreed that that would permit the board to allow a variance for coverage. And as far as the encroachment, we had, I think, did not have an issue with that. So that we are going to, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the variance application for five Harriman's keep, do I have a second?
Second.
Have second and third, and it says there's three of us, vote from the left.
Yes.
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 Okay, so five Harriman's keep is approved, and there'll be a letter going out, of course. The next continuation is seven birthplace. And this has been on for a few times. And I think one of the issues that came up the last time was the activity in the active buffer. And we had looked into it, and it appears that what I had discovered and share with the board members is that the intrusion into the buffer predates the the law of the buffer, so that it's a preexisting nonconforming use. And therefore, I would, and we've already discussed the other two parts of this application, the the coverage and the encroachment in the front yard setback, which I don't think troubled anyone. So based on the fact that the activity in the buffer preexists the statute, I would make a motion to accept the variance in its totality, anybody?
How did we determine that?
Um, we talked to Mary Ann, there was the statute, which is nineteen eighty eight, and that in fact this predates that.
Well, well, how did we establish it predates that?
Because there was, if I recall, a survey that showed it being there on the survey on a date prior to this, the the statute being enacted.
Okay, I'm not sure I saw that.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe someone could bring that up.
Yeah, Brandon has it.
Sure, yeah, let me, let me pull it up. Uh, let's see. Okay. Can everybody see this black and white survey?
I can.
Okay, so this is, this is dated May twenty fourth nineteen eighty eight. Um, and then here you can see a much, a larger extent of the driveway that existed at the time of this survey. Um, and we've superimposed that you've, this is this thing I'm pulling up now is what you've been seeing for a while now. Um, with the old survey and the new survey superimposed on each other. Um, and so there again, that black line indicates the position of the driveway in nineteen eighty eight. Uh, this red line indicates the driveway as it exists now, and um uh, the the information we have on the shape of that um is a little bit nebulous. Uh, the owner prior to the current owners um purchased the house with the driveway in that position as well. So to us, it was unclear if if that change from black to red was precipitated by the comprehensive plan and by the buffer changing to thirty feet, or if it was for some other reason, but um what we can deduce from the little information we have is that the minimum amount of paving was left that's required for a car to to make a three point turn in the driveway. And that's the best information we have.
So do you, does anything more you want to hear or see or ask?
Well, I mean, it looks like the whole shape of the driveway changed, right?
It was reduced. They got reduced.
Well, but I mean, the red lines and the blue lines don't overlap.
No, no, not the blue lines. The blue line is the house.
Oh, sorry, the, sorry, there's lots of colors going on. The pink lines are the house, the blue lines are the required setbacks. Including this, this long straight line back here is the thirty foot buffer from the aqueduct. Yeah.
The original intrusion goes up and around into even a greater distance than what the red.
Right, right. But that, what he's labeled the grayscale line work nineteen eighty eight survey is doesn't overlap with the red and pink line work twenty twenty three survey. Which is labeled the drive, right?
Is the present condition of that driveway in the shape of what's shown as red on this diagram?
That's correct, the new survey from from February twenty twenty three is this red line work. So yeah, it would indicate that the driveway, the the entire shape of the driveway changed between eighty eight and and twenty twenty three. Um, before the current owners on the property and before the previous owners own the property. So.
You keep looking at me, if it's. I'll make a motion, does anyone else want to be heard?
Why, I would, I would prefer not to vote, it, I mean, I'd like to know if there are.
We don't, we don't.
You need to see this, I mean the.
No, I mean, it's clear up there, it's it's clear up there, I just don't draw the same conclusion, right? That I I think that it's nebulous, as he said.
Well, it's nebulous as to when the red driveway was created, but what's not nebulous is that at the time of the zoning change. Um, and sorry, what what year did you say that occurred?
Nineteen eighty nine.
Nineteen eighty nine, so, um, yeah, we know that the order of operations is the driveway existed as the black outline. Then the zoning was changed, then at a certain point, the driveway was significantly reduced. Um, including a great reduction of what was in this new thirty foot buffer that had been created in the village. Um, and so what's left is this one hundred and eight square foot curved portion that's left, but again, the paving predated clearly the creation of the thirty foot buffer, so that's what's not nebulous.
Make your motion.
I make a motion to approve the variance application, which includes the three parts. Encroachment in the front yard setback, coverage and the accurate buffer, do I have a second?
I said.
Voting from right to left?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Great, can I just make one, one small request? Uh, we we never saw the the research that the village attorney turned up. I think maybe for the owner's records going forward and future owners, it would be nice if we could have.
That's, that's a privilege communication between the board and its council, so. If there's anything that needs to be made public and put in public record, we'll put it in the record, but.
Okay, I guess it'll it'll be in the in the meeting minutes, meeting at the very least, right, that we could go back.
Recorded, this meeting is recorded and is available, and there'll be a letter that grants the variance, so I don't, I don't think you need anything more, quite frankly.
Okay, so we'll make note of it, nineteen eighty nine, the buffer was was enacted, okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's Brandon.
Yep.
Next application is thirty nine Beechwood Road. Apparently isn't, seeks an extension of a a variance previously granted, which is, I guess, expired, and, well, no, it hasn't expired, no.
No, they're, they're, they're making an adjustment, right, right?
Right, and actually, I think it's a reduction in coverage, but I guess we'll hear seventeen square feet, we'll hear what the applicant has to say. Hello, Mr. Malone, is that you?
That is me, hello guys. Hi.
John, you heard that, needing unanimous vote, correction.
I'm sorry.
There's only three of us, so you need a unanimous vote.
Right, 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 I, 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 yeah, I understand that, or other client stuff, but. I, uh, this, this was a variance that we received, I believe it has expired because it was March twenty two. When we received the variance, but in addition to the expiration, and one of the reasons for the delay in expiration was there were some changes to the interior and some changes in direction on the interior. Um, so there's a few minor changes to the house, which I can go through if you want. But the the upside is there are two variances that we're asking for, one is for pool location, because the lot has two front yards. Um, the pool location hasn't changed. It has gotten slightly smaller. And then the other one is for building coverage, and again, the uh, coverage as a result of the changes we made has also reduced by seventeen square feet from the previous um, application.
And and you, I'm sorry, John, but you said the location of the pool is is the same location?
It's the same location, the pool is quite slightly smaller, but it's, you know, it's still in a front yard.
In the same footprint of the prior of the approval. Yes, right, and with the coverage, is that also within the same footprint, it hasn't been moved?
There it, it, there is a slight change, which I can show you quickly where the changes are, I'll, I'll go through it very quickly, um.
So John, according to the agenda, and I looked up the minutes, the variances were granted in March of twenty three, not twenty two.
Well, the letter in the file shows. The letter. There was, I just saw. Those, the approval, March twenty fifth, twenty two.
Great. Okay.
Did we have that wrong? Um, we may have.
No, no, the letter is correct, but it's reported in the notice that it was granted on March twenty second of twenty three. I I don't think it impacts it.
Right.
All right, so.
So I think just just quickly, the the change in, it's sort of easier to see in the uh, the coverage diagrams here. Um, so this was the previously approved, uh, we showed the previously approved coverage diagram here. And there was a little uh, space here, that's a few square feet. Uh, that we changed the design to draw a straight line across there, if you can see that. And that added additional coverage. And um, then here, there was a walkway on the side of the house, and that is now a a walk and a staircase down to the basement. Walk and retaining wall, and then the pool has been reduced slightly. And the patio here has been reduced slightly, and that the pool reduction in the patio offset these two additions. But basically, the coverage is in the same location that it was, except for this little blob of an infill here.
So the coverage went down, but you've switched out some things, that was what you're saying?
Yeah, the coverage went down because the the patio was reduced here and the pool um was reduced and you know, this is uh, slightly greater, and this is slightly greater here, the building is slightly greater. Oh, there's reductions, there's also reductions of equipment pads and and a window well on this side that offset the coverage.
Well, in the this, the diagram in the middle is getting was approved in twenty two?
Yes.
And the diagram on the right is what you are proposing now.
Correct.
Does this have to go before the planning board again?
It's been, we've gone through the planning board, and they asked that we come and update the variance, I think, that's this, I approve it.
Okay, just go back to that again, if you would, the the diagrams.
Oh, God, I'm having trouble with the, blowing it up.
So you've added on the right side. Oh, there was a walk with it before?
There is a walkway here before, and this is now a, it starts as a walk and then it's a stair down to the basement.
Is it the same dimension?
Yes, and with, well, it's, 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 uh, I think it's slightly tighter, because this place, there was a, you know, little planting bed between the um, house that isn't there anymore.
Okay, and.
John, could you just make it a little bigger?
Yeah.
There we go.
There you go, perfect. So there were walls on the approved one by this, by the walkway, those are being removed.
Right.
Right.
Patio is two square feet bigger at the rear patio.
Pool's smaller, right.
And on the left side, John, what was done with the equipment?
The left side, there's a window well here that was eliminated, so the window, because now there's a door out of the basement, so this egress window well isn't required. So that was kind of a trade off.
The window well was part of coverage back then, right?
Yeah, it was, yeah, the window was covered.
And the equipment pads are the same, though.
Yeah, the equipment pads.
Okay, so that's a trade off, the window well for the steps. Okay, any comments from anyone out, outside there? And the public?
Uh, nobody's raising their hand, so there are no comments in the chat.
Anyone from the board, John?
Uh, John, in the front of the house, the extension there?
Yeah.
What reason, it looked like, are there interior, are there stairs there, or are you just changing it?
There are stairs, I think it improved the facade, so this house um, very quickly, I'll show you what the existing house is, just the front facade. So this is what the house is, it's a contemporary, and we're moving it to a um uh, more colonial, which I'll show you quickly, and there's just the space that we infill is right here behind this tree. We were trying to use the existing foundation and that um left the the design not quite this uh, not quite where the client wanted, so here I'll show you, ends up with my. That's the existing. And this is the proposed. So what that allowed us to do, that that infill is like, it's not even this whole area, it's this space from about here to here. And it allowed us to engage the garage in a better way, portions of the front of the house better. So the space in the inside, the stair is going up in there now, but um yeah, it made the interior work better, but it also made the exterior work better, a little bit more classical noise range.
Well, any questions?
No.
Okay, um. Nothing, no one else has anything to say, I'm gonna make a motion to accept this, do I have a second?
A second.
Voting from the right?
Again, from the right.
Yes.
I'm just throwing you off a little bit, yes?
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
The next is twenty six South Ferris Street. Uh, variance for encroachment into the front yard, north side yard and south side yard, and exceeds allowable coverage. Good evening. Hey, Mr. Barron, just a quick question, Sarah, some people include copies of the mailings in some of their applications, others do not, does the clerk's office in fact confirm that the mailings have been sent properly?
Yeah, I I check the PDF of the mailings.
Okay, but some of them are not included in some of our applications.
Oh, there they are.
Ah, I can't read those, how do I know those are accurate? I have.
Oh, he gets a P, he copies.
It's a PDF, it sends the PDF.
Okay, yes, sir.
And the mailing is on a couple of days after the application sent to.
Okay, right.
I have them, if you need copies, I can put those together and send them to Sarah.
That's okay, that's okay, and you again, just to say for the record, you know, it's requires unanimous vote for your application, correct?
Yes, I understand, thank you. Um, so Matthew Barron's, I'm the architect representing Wendy Talarico, twenty six South Ferris Street. The application um for variance for lot coverage. Uh, and side yard one, side yard two. Uh, in order to build a one story addition at the rear of the existing residence. I will share my screen, sorry, just bear with me one second. Let me know when you can see this.
Okay, we can see it, well, it's kind of small, but we can see it.
I can blow it up, I think, let me try that. Here we go. Try that.
Okay.
Okay, so this is an application for um, the property on South Ferris Street in the um historic district uh within the village. Um, it is a nonconforming lot. Uh, the um, proposed addition uh in the rear, again, it's a one story addition. Um, you can see the side yard setbacks, one foot on the south side, three feet nine on the on the north side, uh where ten feet is the minimum requirement. Um, the good news for the uh, for the coverage is that the new addition is a hundred and seventy six square feet, but since we are removing um, you can barely see it, it's a little faint here, there's a rear porch and steps down to the rear yard. Uh, those are being removed, um, so it only um ends up with a net add of about uh twenty square feet. Um, um, when you factor in the removals. However, we're also adding this small patio, so it's a total add of uh, and the patio is about thirty three square feet. So it's a total add of a total of sixty two square feet on the coverage. Um.
All the side yards going uh, go no further than the preexisting side, side yard.
Correct, yeah, we're, we're basically staying within the line of the existing residents. And again, all of them.
That ramp, ramp porch is just gonna end at the addition?
Correct, we didn't want to, because it's historic and it is a contributing building, we didn't want to make too many modifications to the existing. Um, so basically, from the front, from the side, uh, meaning the north side and from the front, the house is basically unchanged. I do have um, a comparative analysis that I can share also, let me just see.
What was, what was that, really, the proposed addition is, what was there before?
Um, just part of the porch and the stairs down to grade.
So the the porch wraps around all the way around to the back of the house?
Three sides, correct, the front, the side and the back, the front, the north side and the back.
So he's getting rid of the back porch?
Exactly.
Right, and and the back porch is elevated?
It is, it's at the, that's, it's at street, it's at, sorry, first floor level, uh, and the side drops off from the first floor down to the basement level.
Okay, you want to show us something else?
Yes, the comparative analysis, let me just uh get this brought up. I might have to shrink this a little for. So this is basically, you could see, um, hopefully you can see this, uh, the, let me check and blow that up a little. So you can see the um typical of this part of the village, um, the houses are on, are all on undersized lots. Um, the uh, going from A, the subject property, uh, and counterclockwise around uh to M for a total of twelve adjacent lots, including the existing, which makes it thirteen. All of the uh lots are nonconforming for coverage. Um, uh, the average percentage of of coverage of the lot is forty percent. Uh, we are at proposed thirty two. Uh, the percentage of allowed average is a hundred and sixty five, we are at one thirty four. Uh, and the existing um, coverage is uh one thousand two hundred and forty four square feet, and we're at eight seventy one. So um, it's not a large um overage. Uh, I guess in in the sense of the percentages it is, but given the context of the neighborhood, it it's really not. Um, and again, we are replacing uh the porch that's there. Uh, we are staying within the line of the existing house, um, and uh, the a good portion of that coverage is the proposed patio, which is at grade level. This area, you, sorry.
You just go back, second back, I'm sorry, you just go back up to the, you're lot A, correct?
Correct, lot A, sorry, now I can't get this, uh, bear with me, there we go. Whoops.
So what's?
What's behind the house?
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the color scheme, what does it mean, it's a little yellow there, or what's going on?
Just yellow, I highlighted the the subject property A, that's all.
Okay, you're not sneaking in a barn there or anything like that, are you?
No, not now.
If there was, we're not gonna let that you do that, so, okay. Is that the house, is that the lower end, oh, it's B, okay. I got it, okay.
Correct.
You want to show us something else?
Uh, yeah, sure, I can show you, uh.
Not that you have to, I may just, I don't want to talk presentation.
So this is the existing conditions, um, at the basement level, um, square rubble basement. Uh, that is unfinished, it's gonna remain unfinished. Uh, the first floor, um this is, you can see here where the wraparound porch is, we're not touching the second floor. Uh, again, this is only a uh, one story addition, and it's basically where this wraparound porch is and the stair coming down, that is uh, the stair is coming down, this piece though, um, that goes along the north side will stay. And the new addition is basically just gonna tuck in right here, behind this piece. Um, I will show the proposed. So this is uh where we're going out in the basement. And this is, you can see here, the small, um, sorry, this thing keeps jumping on me. Um, that small patio at grade level, um, for basically egress out from the basement level. Uh, and then on the first floor, just extending this uh open area out. And then you can see here the roof below. And this is uh the, the elevation, so from the north side, uh, like I said, the the addition is just gonna tuck in behind um that existing porch that's on the north side, and this is that rear elevation.
Question. Thank you, any questions from the public?
Comments?
No, is there something?
Sure. No, I mean, I went, I looked at it today, I mean, it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, there's no doubt about that, and it's really invisible from the street, so I I'm kind of in favor of it, even though, kind of, kind, well, I'd always like there to be less than there is, but you know.
Okay. Good, any comments?
No, no comments, and and, you know, I mean, it, uh, I looked at the average on the, on the coverage. It's below the average.
Right.
It's in line.
And as we know, on that diagram you have there, if you were to abide by, you know, setbacks or things of the sort, you can only build that little wreck, that long rectangle would be within the setbacks, right? On your diet. Gotcha, yeah, so I'll make a motion to uh prove the variance, um, starting from the left. Although I have a second, I'm sorry.
A second.
Starting from the left?
Yes.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay. The next is uh fifteen Hendrick Hendrick Lane South. Uh, variances of section two two four eleven encroachment into the side yard. Exceeds allowable coverage. Uh, and it's in order to four season room, it's a legalized and existing deck. Actually, book property, realized an existing deck, is that, is that true, that it was a?
Deck or shed.
It was a shed, that's what I thought. And actually, it says that in the notice, it also says an existing deck on the notice. Hmm.
Well, what did the letter from the planning board say?
Well, the the the, what the proposed shed exceeds the allowable coverage and approaches into the side yard.
That's the actual application for the ZBA, so the applicant did it right, but apparently um as written, it's a little bit off, but. So let's be clear about this, is the applicant out there?
Uh, he's starting now.
But we think this has been properly noticed?
That's the question.
Uh, good evening, my name is Gene Vitrano, I am with the site design consultants and Mimo Design, we are the uh architects and engineers for Dr. Luthra and his wife, uh, he is proposing a uh three season sunroom. Three-season sunroom off of his existing kitchen and dining area, let me share my screen. Okay. Can you see the screen?
No.
You can't, okay, let me try this again. Now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much, I apologize, I'm a bit of a novice at this, so actually, I'm I'm a dinosaur when it comes to this, at any rate, Dr. Luther resides at fifteen Hendrick Lane South, which is in the. View preservation district, we've appeared before planning, they have approved our plan and then referred us now to ZBA for two variances, one is for a setback. For an existing shed that was constructed on an existing previous concrete pad. And actually, in speaking to Dr. Lutheran, I believe he's on this the Zoom meeting also. Dr. Luther informed me that the shed has been there for approximately twenty years and was actually on the property when he went before the zoning board of appeals for a previous project, but I will show you that. Based on.
Suggesting that the shed was legal, I I don't think you're saying.
No, no, the shed was, no, but he said that the shed was there, so what I'd like to share is the site plan or survey that I received from the building department, which was executed by Riley Land Surveyors, who is no longer in practice, this is the concrete shed that was on the property in two thousand nine. And on that shed. There is now constructed, I apologize, on that slab is now constructed, this shed, so it was on an existing slab. So the coverage was previous to the construction of the shed, right now, the shed encroaches on the setback by one and a half feet. The setback is thirteen.
A couple of points, one is, I think you were told that this requires unanimous vote, you know that, correct?
I I'm sorry, say that again, I didn't hear you, sir.
It's only three of us tonight, so that, well, three of us approve this, if one of us does not approve it, then it's denied.
Because we we cannot come back, is that what the case is?
Cannot come back, no. So the opportunity here is to adjourn it at your request to the next session, where I hope there'll be five of us here. And I will tell you, the shed is not only. Over this, is it outside the setback, you're saying?
It's it's it protrudes one and a half feet into the side yard setback, correct? And it's an existing shed.
Well, I know it's existing.
Yes, sir.
You're here. So. And also, as. Charlie pointed out, your application was was done right, and your handwriting, because it does say about the shed exceeds the allowable coverage and encroaches into the side yard, and you're also seeking coverage for the proposed sunroom, however, it was noticed publicly as a legalizing an existing debt. And it doesn't doesn't mention the shed in the in the public notice, which I think is an issue of.
The building department, correct?
Well, yes. It's not yours, your fault, apparently, but, so there's a problem in the transcription or whatever, so. So one of the concern we had was a properly notice, number one, number two is requires three of us. Number four is, you know, the the shed, or number three, the shed is, you know, an issue. So I don't know if you want to put this over till next month.
Can I defer to Dr. Luther, I believe he's at the meeting, can I ask him, or is that not proper?
Oh, he's not here, he's not physically here.
No, he sees, he should be.
Online, of course.
Should be online, yes, sir.
If you want to talk to him private, I guess you can.
As long as I have you, can I, I had a question just on the shed?
Yes.
You say that that the slab was there?
Yes.
And did the property come before the zoning board, but did you say in two thousand nine?
I believe so, a- and also, there's more to this than just the shed, in the research that I was able to complete, I found that a a variance was previously issued for coverage, which exceeds the allowable coverage for the zone, and those square footages don't. Don't add up to the square footages that were on the survey of the previous for the previous project. And I reviewed all of this with Doug Han from Han Engineering before I went before planning for my second second presentation, and he told me to put in my calculations, as I calculated off of the initial survey provided by the building department versus the updated survey from Ward Carpenter, and to present that to you, because the the additional issue is that evidently the fountain was never legalized, that's what increased the coverage, the coverage, because the sunroom is going on an existing deck, and actually, the sunroom is smaller than the footprint of the deck that's being removed, so in essence, we're decreasing coverage by twenty-seven square feet of what's there now.
What was their prior variance?
The prior variance was a coverage variance, and on the plans that were submitted in two thousand nine, it was or let me get my notes and I will tell you, it said that a coverage variance was granted for. Hmm, give me one second. Four thousand six hundred and forty-seven square feet, and the allowable for this property is three thousand nine thirty-four, so a variance was granted. But when I used the survey provided by the building department and calculated the coverage, it actually measured four thousand nine seventy-seven.
And the. But the variance is not part of, you didn't include that variance here, it's part of the record, did you, I don't see it here.
Uh, it was on, let me see. I believe it's on, if you take a look at the climatic and geographic design criteria in the zoning data sheet, there's a note on the bottom, it says site coverage variance previously granted for four thousand six forty-seven of coverage with proposed sunroom, lot coverage to be forty-nine eighty-seven, so the numbers, they're they're really. They don't match up with the survey provided by the billing department, and again, I went over this with Doug Han on more than one occasion, he told me to use my calculations, and then once I got through planning to come before ZBA and explain that it's more than just the sunroom, because again, in essence, the sunroom footprint is smaller than the deck that's being removed.
Let me just say this, what you just mentioned about this variance, the prior variance, is that in the in the balloon spot of what you're showing us now?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's right here, see it, right, see this, this was on the original submission.
But but honestly, on what was submitted to us, we can't make any of that stuff out, so I wouldn't have been able to read that. And then I and I can't still read it on this.
Make it, can you make?
Can't read this on the screen?
No, no, make it bigger.
Yeah, yeah, I I know what the number, the allowable is thirty-nine twenty. Right, the existing four-nine-nine-seven, posed five-three-five-five?
Yes, that's correct.
It it took me a while to zoom in and.
I I apologize, again, I'm kind of.
That's okay.
I suffer through this.
I still can't see it. This is really exciting, what do you got there?
Within the blue ink.
Also, you wrote.
That's what.
That's present, but you read it accurately.
But I have one question, still going back to this, the the shed slash slab.
Yes.
In two thousand nine, was there a shed there, or was it just a concrete slab at the time?
According to Dr. Luther, who is now, I see that he's part of the Zoom call, the shed was there.
The shed was there and no.
Yes.
Okay, no, just.
Well, when did the doctor purchase the property?
Dr. Luther, can you speak, I see that he's joined the meeting. Dr. Luther? I see that he's he's part of the meeting, I could see his name on the screen.
You might just be on.
It looks like he's muted. Yeah, he's muted.
Oh, there he is, there he is. If you unmute, unmute yourself, Dr. Luther. No, I still cannot hear you.
You see a copy of the variance you said? I saw a copy of the minutes. Right, so.
What year, nine?
Twenty-ten was the minutes, you were on the board then.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Yeah, and Dr. Luther said that that shed was shown on that submission to the zoning board, and no one ever mentioned anything about it.
Sir, you could pull that, not now, obviously, but you can get first that variance from back then, if it's there somewhere, right?
Now, I think he's gone, no, here he is, Dr. Luther, did you unmute? We cannot hear you.
I like to make a suggestion if I.
Yes, sir, please.
I don't know if you're gonna like it, but I'll make it, I I could not have read this, I could not read this chart before you just blew it up just now, so I had no clue about this variance. And I would like to pull the variance and the meeting minutes from back then, so would I be, could I be so bold as to suggest we put this over for a month?
I I'm fine, if, you know, again, I want Dr. Luther to know what's happening, absolutely. I I appreciate that, and I think that makes the most sense at this point, because again, it's more than just, it's more than just that variance, when I use the survey again of the site plan provided by the billing department, and I calculated the coverage, I'll go to, let me go to the coverage counts. This, I don't know if you can see this, so this needs to be larger, this is the, this is the site plan, plot plan provided by the billing department, these are the marks for each of the areas that are covering the lot. The coverage is calculated by CAD is four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet, I did it numerous times, and kept coming up with four-nine-seven-seventy-seven. Again, the variance was for four-six-forty-seven, so I don't know what happened between the variance and the forty-nine-seventy-seven, and then when Ward Carpenter did the new survey. This fountain was not on the survey, everything else is the same.
What was the variance again, you said?
The variance was for.
Total of?
Forty-six-forty-seven, four thousand six hundred and forty-seven. And when I calculated the coverage on the site plan provided by the billing department, it was four thousand nine seventy-seven, I did it more than once, I had other people in the office do it. Four-nine-seventy-seven kept coming up as the number, and then again, if you take a look, the existing deck. This deck is being removed, the deck is three hundred and fifty-seven square feet, that's this deck here. The sunroom, the footprint of the sunroom is smaller than the existing deck, the sunroom is thirty, three hundred and thirty-nine square feet. The second issue was that this fountain was never shown on a survey in the building department, so this increased coverage.
Are those things listed on your chart there, it says?
Yes, they are, yep.
What's number three?
Number three, shed at the pool enclosure. That's shed, this little shed right here.
Right.
And see this right here, see that little shed? So every single thing is included, it, primary building is one, this is the pool enclosure, two. The shed is here, three, the wood steps at the pool enclosure, that's here. The AC pad by the shed, that's this little pad. The front entry flagstone steps that are all of these steps here that go up to the front. The front composite.
In the back.
Driveway.
But the steps in the back aren't included.
Well, the steps in the back, they're included, if you take a look at, hold on now, the rear deck steps and composite deck at the rear, four hundred and forty-nine square feet, so that's this deck and these steps.
Yeah, I'm talking about the steps at the other end, all the way down.
Here?
On, no, there's, so the the property is cantilevered in the back, and then there are steps coming down in the grass. Right, go back to where those three lines.
Right here.
Lines, those wavy lines.
These lines, no, tho- those are just, uh, uh, stone, stone blocks, their patio, their blocks, there's nothing paved, nothing covered. I was told not to include those, it's just curb, those are not steps.
Who told you not to include them, the plan?
The engineer, engineer, yep.
Okay, I'm actually talking about the steps on the property line.
On the property. Oh, here, no, those aren't step size, those are all curb, that's all pavers, or, you know, Belgian block curving, there's no steps. Everything is a curb.
Not include those too?
Yep.
Okay.
These are all curb.
You do have the fountain there.
The fa- yeah, the fountain was never on the survey that was provided to me from two thousand nine on Riley survey, so this was, this is what increased the coverage. Because if it were just the sunroom on the deck, the sunroom is smaller than the footprint of the existing existing deck.
You have the back shed on that?
I do, yep, I have that shed, let's see, that is number nine. Shed on rear yard concrete pad with flagstone step, one hundred and three square feet, yep. Even the generator pad full, everything is there, fourteen.
You have, I'm sorry, you have the, a copy of the application from two thousand and nine or ten, whatever it was? With the same calculation? You do not, we we might have those, right, sir?
I could, I did not have access to that.
That's okay, so are you okay with, I don't want everyone else to think so, but.
Yeah, I I I believe so, I just want Dr. Luther to understand that, that this is, you know, again, it's more than just an issue of, I believe, the sunroom going on a deck, if it were just the sunroom on the deck, I'm decreasing coverage, I'm not increasing it.
Right, and if anyone happened, two thousand and ten, it might actually support you in a better way.
Right.
So, again, I guess, I guess we could ask that it be adjourned, we can do that ourselves, so I don't, yes, I'm the chairman, I can say that. So I I don't think we need the doctor's consent, I mean, it would be nice if he would, but I'm gonna ask that it be adjourned so that we can get the two thousand and ten, if that was the year or nine, application and approval, so we can have a complete record before we take a vote on this, and and again, it'll be more than three of us, so, for the benefit of the doctor as well.
I understand, I I I agree, but again, I want Dr. Luther to understand that it's more than just, I believe, the sunroom going on the deck, if if that were just the case, I'm actually decreasing coverage, I'm not increasing it, it's just an issue that the fountain was never included, and I don't know how. I don't know how they ended up with forty-six-forty-seven, one on the survey provided by the billing department, it's forty-nine seventy-seven.
He goes to type in the. He's having trouble with the audio.
Right, Mr. Vitrano, can he, can you call him on the phone when we're?
Uh, yeah, let me, let me try to do that, please, give me one second, if you would, thank you.
Want to mute yourself, you can mute, this way we don't have to hear your private conversation.
I, let me see if I can figure. Have to excuse me here.
I'll mute you on this side, so we'll we'll mute you, mute to you.
I I'll check the schedule, but I think it's the fall.
Oh, is it Tuesday after? That would be great. Pavers and stuff.
Yeah.
Do count, yeah.
Do count.
So I walked down these steps today, and I'm like, are these in the calculation or not?
Even if you have the driveway, but then it has Belgian block.
I I apologize, I understand, it's it's the Tuesday.
The Tuesday or Thursday.
When we have our meeting.
Right.
On the twenty-first.
I mean, it's set, I'm, it's up to me, I can't, right, but I'm in DC, you know, yeah, I'll be around, I'll be here. Hopefully, sour beer, rosemary beer. Only on November, but, hopefully. Well, it's like a John, I guess you're still.
Has he spoken to the doctor?
At least you're talking off camera.
He's jeans on.
Phone with you. Hi, I'm I'm on the phone with Dr. Luther now.
Okay.
Yeah, so so again, Dr. Luther, I mean, I believe the recommendation makes an awful lot of sense at this point.
Well, the thing is, you know, the the bottom line is, they have to find the two twenty-ten meeting minutes and see what was approved, but the shed, like I said, has been there since we bought the property, not just the concrete pad, but the whole shed, so.
All right, so that that, so that issue, again, I I, I mean, I guess we can go back to Google Earth to two thousand and three to see if the shed was there.
No, we have pictures of the shed.
Oh, you do, awesome, all right.
Two thousand and threes, I mean, there's no doubt about it.
So so can, does everyone hear that, that the shed was there in two thousand and three when Dr. Luther purchased the property, he has photographs of it?
It'll also give us a chance to straighten out the notice, right?
All right, but again, I think Dr. Luther, the larger issue was the the coverage, the variance is for a square footage that doesn't match what's on the survey that was on file at the billing department.
So who's gonna figure that out?
Uh, I mean, I guess they're gonna go back, they're gonna go back over the minutes of the meeting to see what and if the variance was issued for that forty-six-forty-seven, and then we'll have to ask, I'm assuming, for a variance for the difference between forty-six-forty-seven and our proposed coverage of fifty-three-fifty-five. Between forty-six, forty-seven and, uh, our proposed coverage of fifty-three, fifty-five. And whatever we pull.
Well, well, ha- well, hang on a second, though. The encroachment into the side yard stands independently. Right?
Correct. Although it hasn't been noticed, that's why it's gotta be, right, it's great. But also, whatever we pull, right, the old file from oh, nine or ten. We'll make sure, obviously, we'll get you, we'll get you a copy of whatever we have, so you'll have. You can say it ahead of time as well, so that. We're gonna be on the same page when we have our conversation next month. If that's what we're agreeing to.
Right, and if, if the shed was there and in the surveys from that time and, you know.
And that, that, that takes care of that. Then the, the issue becomes the, uh, the coverage.
Care of it, documents.
At least it documents, yes, I, I, yes, yes.
And then, uh, Gene, for myself, uh, just as far as the coverage.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know, pavers and and things, you know, like just to, just to ensure that the coverage is accurate.
I will, I'll go back over that. As I said, I went over that with Doug Connor more than one occasion. I sent it to him for review before I went back to planning my second time. And he said everything looked good. So, but you know, that's. That's what I based my submission on to planning when we got approval. Uh, at the second.
You know, Gina, a retaining wall is part of coverage now, so.
But it's not a retaining wall. They're just, you know, they're, they're, it's a curb. It's separating parts of grass. There's no steps. It's not retaining anything. They're just stone curbs. Yeah, Dr. Luther said that. Yeah, Dr. Luther said. He said one of the members actually visited the site today.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Where is the retaining wall? I don't.
Yeah, no, no, there's no retaining wall. I did have a question about the steps in the backyard, though.
The, you, you're saying, so these are steps back here?
Yeah, it was the steps.
All right, I mean, I'll, I'll go, I'll go back and walk back there again. If I have to include that in the coverage, then I will. Absolutely.
Okay, so can we adjourn this?
Uh, Dr. Luther? He's talking about the steps in the back, uh, as I have my back to your pool enclosure looking east. So at the southeast corner of your property. That the steps going up towards the Columbia University property.
There's no step there. There's all Belgian blocks. Those are not steps to go up and down.
So why don't I, I'll take pictures and then when we come back before the board the next time, okay?
I'm sure I visit for certain. I'm sorry I didn't visit it, but I'll visit for certain.
I'm sorry. Dr. Luther's on the phone at the same time. I apologize.
I, I just said I, I had not have a chance to visit, but I'll make sure I visit it for the next meeting.
Yeah, if you can, I appreciate that. And I'll, I'll go back down there again myself, because again, I walked the property. I took as many photographs as I could. I didn't, I mean, I didn't see steps there, but again, if you. The, you know, define them as steps, I'll include them in the coverage.
Mr. Pichano, can we just make the decision to put this over so we can move on?
Yes, please. I apologize for taking all your time. Absolutely.
That, that's, that's fine, but we'll do our homework. We'll get you whatever we get from the, from the historical records. Then we'll meet next month and we'll hopefully reach resolution.
All right, so then you'll, you'll provide that to me, or should I check with the billing department or just?
Yeah, Sarah. Who's here? Sarah, who's with the billing department? Does an excellent job, by the way.
I appreciate everything Sarah's done so far. She's helped me out.
We all know that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
We're gonna renotice as well.
Yeah, we have to renotice this, right?
Right.
And Sarah will take care of that as well. She'll.
She'll take care of the, the verbiage. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
And, and I think his wife is there, so I said hello.
I believe so, yes. Thank you very much.
All right, then. And the next and final. Matter is thirty South Ferris.
We're not seeing ninety Fargo.
Ninety Fargo.
ETA Fargo. Utility.
You know, it's funny, I. I'll start to show, but yes, South Ferris.
All right, so.
Is next one.
It's not the last one, I apologize.
Yeah, I could not.
Yeah, I should learn how to turn the page. My store, I said. Anyway. Okay.
Good night, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Rob Jones. I'm the architect and owner at thirty South Ferris Street. Um, presenting, uh, to you from thirty South Ferris Street, um, just down the street. Uh, and if you don't mind, I'll share my screen and we can take a look at our proposed project. So this is the Brazil Jones Residence Deck remodel. Uh, this is gonna be very similar to what we just saw to, to, uh. Panelists ago for twenty-six South Ferris. Uh, this is an addition going in at the rear of the house. And, uh, we will be seeking, um, uh, the variances for encroachment into the north side yard setback. Encroachment into the south yard se- uh, setback. And, uh, the exceeding allowable coverage as well as exceeding allowable far. And I should also note that this, uh, residence is. Um, a historic building, uh, and contributing building to the historic district. And is also located in View Preservation District. So what I'll go ahead and do is just walk you guys through the, uh, the plans as we have them drawn up. Uh, but first, I'll give you a look here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just make sure you know that. The vote has to be unanimous. I'm certain you've heard that before, but, uh. Right, so you have the right to. Ask for an adjournment, but otherwise, it's gotta be all three of us.
Yes, that sounds good. I'm aware of that. Thank you. All right, so just, uh, before we jump into the drawings, I thought I'd show you guys a, a photo of the existing conditions. Um, Charles, I know you were there earlier and I appreciate your time today, uh, checking that out. And, uh, so this is a photo of the existing conditions. Uh, the existing deck is a multi-story. Um, exposed deck with stairs which lead, lead down from our first floor. Um, also known as the main level. Down to our ground floor garden level. And, uh, just due to, to significant wear and tear and rot, uh, we're, we're looking to replace this, uh, with something new. So go ahead and jump into the drawings now.
No, we'll have to do the same. Same, uh, the same footprint deck.
Certainly smaller.
So you'll, yeah, you'll actually see as I get into our, um, this is, uh, the existing site plan that you see here now. And you'll see that the proposed site plan, which I'll flip to here, uh, is significantly smaller. It's actually ninety-nine square. Feet smaller than the coverage that we have at the existing, uh, the existing deck conditions. Uh, which is great. So we're, we're reducing the, the coverage, uh, by seven percent. To, like I said, ninety-nine square feet less. Uh, but with the, uh, with the design that we have proposed, the far, uh, in, it's increases slightly, and I can show you guys the. Uh, the proportions and, and how those both, uh, decrease and increase. So again, here's our existing site plan. Uh, the existing deck is on the west side of the house. This drawing is oriented north-south. Uh, so the, uh, in the entirety of the development of the new conditions here, which I'm showing. Are contained within the envelope of the building. And I, I bring that up to address the view preservation district requirements. In that there will be no, uh. No view obstructed by the, uh, proposed addition on the west side of the home. Here are a lot coverage diagrams. You can see the existing lot coverage on the bottom. And you can see the proposed lot coverage on the top. Uh, this is what I was referencing earlier, and that we have, uh, one thousand three hundred and ninety-four square feet of existing coverage. And we are proposing one thousand two hundred and ninety-five square feet, so that is a net difference of negative ninety-nine square feet. Continuing on, we have our, uh, far diagrams. And again, I mentioned this, or again, you, you'll see the existing far on the bottom and the proposed conditions on the top. And there is a slight increase from, uh, sixty-three percent to, uh, or point six-three upon the existing conditions and, uh, point six-nine. And the proposed.
And why is that?
I'm sorry.
Why is your increase?
So there is an increase because the current conditions for the, uh, existing deck, as you can see here, it's all, um, an exposed deck condition. And with the proposed conditions, which I'm actually gonna just jump ahead really quick to our, uh, exterior.
Just through your old presentation. I'll, I'll sit quietly for the rest of the presentation.
Oh, no, no problem. Feel free to jump in at any time. If I'm going too fast, or if you have any questions, I'm happy to address anything. Um, so here's a, here's a zoomed in. Uh, this is our demo plan showing the existing ci- conditions to be removed. Uh, here is our ground floor garden level, uh, showing the proposed locations for foundation supports. And the, uh, start of the stair run. And then we'll move up to the first floor plan. The first floor plan shows the, um. The outdoor deck space on the north side of the deck. And then we actually have an enclosed area on the south side. So it's a partially enclosed deck. Uh, for, um, approximately fifty to seventy-five percent of the deck. Uh, on the south side. And then, like I said, the exposed side on the north. And so that would answer your question about the far, uh, because we are enclosing the space here on the south, that is actually gonna increase our far for, for this. And our roof plan, just showing the pitched roof. Condition for the proposed. Uh, enclosed space. And here are our elevations. You'll see the existing conditions on the top. Uh, for the northwest and south views. And then underneath that, you'll see the correlating conditions for the proposed, uh, development. Uh, so you'll see the, the, the change in run of the stair. And then, um, here, the west exterior elevation, which I think tells, you know, the, the best story. Uh, we'll show you, uh, the conditions of the enclosed. Uh, deck and then the open area on the north side. And then we have some building sections as well, which just. I will also give you a view into the, uh, the. Kind of last, um. Design element in the space, which is adding a French door on the. Existing exterior of the building of the residence to give access in and out of the enclosed space from. Excuse me, the existing kitchen. And just to jump to our comparisons quickly, I know this is a lot of data, and if you cannot see it, I totally understand. I'll, I'll zoom in as much as I can. Uh, but this is the, uh, neighborhood comparisons, uh, for what we're looking at now. You can see this is the data sorted by percent lot of coverage. So the lot of coverage here on the far right, you'll see that our existing conditions are in blue. At fifty-six point three-five percent. And our proposed conditions in green, uh, again, reduced to fifty-two point three-four percent. And you'll see we're about in the middle slash, uh, slightly below average, actually. Uh, in terms of the, uh, percent of lot coverage for the neighborhood. And then I also have in this the far comparisons. And so the far comparisons, uh, which you'll see here in the middle. Show the existing conditions in blue. And then the proposed conditions at point six-nine. In, uh, green below at the high average end of the neighborhood comparison. And that is, um, that is our, uh, proposal for thirty South Ferris.
You go back to the FAR comparisons, please?
Yes.
And could you?
Make it bigger?
Yeah, please. Load it up a little bit for us.
Yes, I can do that. So if you just keep in mind that the blue is existing and then the green is, uh, proposed.
Yeah. That concludes your presentation.
That concludes our presentation, and if, um. Um. I believe that, yeah, that's all that I have to present. Uh, if you have any questions, then.
You did a nice job, that's for sure. Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, like, as you said, I went to. See the place today. It's, it's definitely in character with his neighbors on either side and, you know, looking across the backyard. You know, it's. It, it seemed, you know, it seems like it's a good, a good plan, and it fits in with the neighborhood.
Not out of character, as we say.
Not out of character, right?
And, and Rob, just so I understand this, sort of the scope of the project. The, on the, what you would call the main, the main floor. Are, is there gonna be, uh, are you extending that deck above the deck? So that's, that's where the FAR is coming from? For that enclosed, the, the enclosed room, is that on the main floor? Or is that, would that be on the, the, on the ground floor, the, the grass level?
Yeah, that's right. So the enclosed space, um, if you look at drawing five on this sheet particularly, the enclosed space is on the main floor, and that's actually at street level. Uh, and that is the first floor, uh, of, so it's similar to how, if you guys remember twenty-six Ferris. Uh, they, they were showing that as well. And so that is, I can highlight this for you here. That is gonna be the enclosed area. But. Down a little bit. And so this blue is, is, like I said, so the ground level is here with our basement and then the. First floor, main level. And the enclosed area highlighted in blue.
I understand. And, and the street view is unchanged.
Street view is unchanged, that's right. So the street view is gonna be on the east side of the home, um, unchanged with this development.
Any other comments from the board members? Anyone out there in the public, man?
No.
I'll make a motion, uh, to accept this. Am I right?
Yes.
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 Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Okay, we'll get a letter out to you. Hopefully this week. And finally, on page two of the agenda.
It's on page one, come on.
Big printer. Ninety Fargo names. Uh, seeking a variance. Section two, four dash eleven, encroachment into the front yard setback. To document utility meter and distribution box. Who previously approved that application as we booked our property interest. Oh, Mr. Malone.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. So, um, this is for a project that is, uh, nearly complete. There were. Some changes during the as-built and closed-out of the project during the CFO process. And the building department identified that the. Electrical box, the conne electrical boxes attached to the existing pole that was there. Uh, is in the setback. And was never shown on our site plan as, um. As being attached to the pole. So, uh, we are here because of the location of that, um. Electrical box, the, the, the panels associated with the electrical service. Are in the front yard setback. So. We're asking for a variance specifically for the, to allow the, uh, panels to be.
You have a photo or a sketch or something that shows us?
Yeah. So, um. This, uh, is the house. Fargo Lane is on the bottom of the page. Uh, this is the location of the existing pole. And if you zoom in, there's, uh, two electric meter on one side and a service panel on the other side of that pole. So.
And a big bowl shot or?
It's a, it's a, uh, just a kind of, uh, a pole, a, um, tall pole. It's a power pole.
It's a tall pole.
Yeah. And that, that pole was indicated in the, you know, survey information for the original variance request and for the original planning board. That was approved. What wasn't included is these boxes. Uh, we just, you know, neglected to show that. We didn't realize that that would be. Something that they want to see as a building.
So this is a pole that's owned by the, the public utility?
No, it's a pers- it's a personal power pole. When, when they, the client makes the determination whether they need a pole. Or not. So the pole is actually on the property and the meters and the boxes are on the owner's property. Very close to the property line.
Are there, are there wires on top of this pole that run to and connect it to other service?
They run from the pole, uh, the wires run from the pole to the other pole across the street. So there's a pole across the street, wires run across to this pole, and then this service box allows the service to go underground to the house. So there aren't wires connected to the house. The, the, there's a drop on the pole. What's actually called a riser that brings it down, and then, uh, the power comes in underground to the house.
And you say that the pole itself is, was approved at that location previously.
Well, yeah, the pole, when we, when we came to planning board with this project originally, and when we went for the variance for the front yard. There's a front yard setback for this portion of the existing house that remained. Uh, because we were modifying it, there's a front yard setback that was granted. Back in the beginning of the project. When we did that, that pole was already located there. It was part of the power system for the house. There was an overhead wire. From that pole to the house. And that's been revised. And that's been revised to be an underground wire.
What do these boxes look like, John?
Uh, they're big, they are big metal panels. So. What we had shown with um, the uh, for the planning board as a concern is if there was a concern of the visual impact of these. They're, they're big metal panels. I can find a picture of them. Um, but. What we're proposed to do is two things is um, there's a planting plan here. That has been updated. I'm already agreed to by the. What's going on with this? There's a planting plan that's been agreed upon to sh- shield the view of this box from the street. So there's new skip walls being planted around it. Uh, this went to the planning board and there, they, you know, approved that approach. Contingent on it, uh, getting a licensing agreement from the village. So the license agreement is, has been drafted and it's been approved by the board of trustees. So that's happened and also due to the approval. Basically, it's to allow us to plant these shrubs in the village right away to kind, to. To shield the pole. The other thing we uh, propose to do to lessen the impact. So on this page. So the, the actual pole itself that's shown here, we've uh, we're going to be painting. I mean, not the pole, but we're gonna be painting the boxes to match the color of the shrubbery. That's there and the frame that's, that's supporting the boxes, the wood frame is supporting, but it's being cut back. And reduced and painted to make it as low impact as possible. So there's a piece of plywood.
I'm sorry, the boxes are not there now, correct?
The boxes are there. They, they've always been there. It's, it's, you know, they've been, they were installed early. In the project. This, this is something that's come up uh, during the CFO process.
The boxes are live, right?
The boxes are live. There was a separate permit to install the boxes. That permit was closed out before this project even started, actually.
You have a picture of it?
Yeah, let me find a picture of it.
These?
That's the box.
That plywood behind the box?
Yeah, the plywood behind the box. So one of the things that's in the notes that we're doing is this piece of this plywood that extends to the other side. Is being cut back so that it's exactly the size of the um. Of the box. And then all that plywood assembly and the body of the box and those risers, everything below this point will be painted to match, like a green to match the winter color of the. Skip walls that are coming in and then this thing will be surrounded by skip walls on the street side.
This is the view from the street?
This is the street side, yeah. I mean, this, this is not what you see from the street. This is a close-up view from the street side, okay? Like standing right.
Aren't those electrical boxes in the meter just, I mean, typically on the house, on a house?
Uh, there are sometimes on a house, there are sometimes remote on a riser. Uh, in this case, again, these were installed before this project started. Um, so the meter, the meter was always in this location. The thing that changed during the project was the riser that brought it down. Uh, below grade. So the meter was already here.
What was there? Was this project a new, new construction?
There's an existing house here and that, that, uh, if you can see back here where the black is, that was the location, existing house. And there was a wire from the top of this pole to the house. So.
The existing pole.
Yeah, this pole went to the house, right?
And that's the meter for the service to the house, right?
Yeah.
And obviously, the. Power runs underground and goes into the house at some point, into the basement somewhere, I would think.
Yeah.
Right from the pole.
Right, yeah.
To the house.
Right.
But on the old house, the electrical box was on the house, right? During the renovation, at some point. This box got installed on near Fargo Lane, near the street.
I think when, at originally, uh, the house, the house probably had a meter on it. Uh, so the client was living in this house uh, before and at some point they upgraded this power. Uh, they upgraded the power, you know, because when you move to a new house, I guess the most pet only hundred amps or something like that. And in the process of upgrading the power. This meter box was installed in this location. So. This power was installed and there wasn't a planning board process associated with it. It was an electrical permit. Uh, because I think that's what the village thought was appropriate. So there's an electrical permit that was opening, closed to install the meter in this location. It still had an overhead wire. Uh, even though the service was upgraded, it was from here, power, overhead wire to the house. Um, so. Uh, the thing that changed when we did the renovation to the house and what went to the planning board for the renovation was to put this below grade. So this was never identified as something that was here. Um, and I guess the, the, the act of putting it below grade made it a, made it a, a building or made it.
But another, I mean, I've, I've seen other new homes and renovations where the lines from the street just go underground. And then the electrical box is on the side of the house.
Yeah, you can, you can do that. You have to open the street in this case. So I think, uh. That was, that was never a proposal and also Con Ed makes that decision whether they'll put something under the street. So, and again, the, the decision to, to locate uh, the pole here was something that was made before the project started. And the decision to locate the meter here was made before the project was started. So that. The project didn't include relocating the meter to the house, but you could have, you're right, you could have.
Who made the decision to put that meter there?
Uh, the homeowner made that decision, but again, not part of this process, right? It was part of the. Um, it was part of the um. Uh, an earlier uh, process that preceded this uh, planning board approval.
This is just. This is strictly an electric meter, right?
Yeah.
And don't they have the ability to read electric meters remotely where they can put this thing on the inside of the house and get it off the street? I mean, it's, it's really unattractive, like, right?
Yeah, but I, I think part of what we're showing, we can go back to the, the drawings, is that we'll, we're gonna make it. We're not, you're not gonna be able to see it. I mean, we're gonna plant it.
Yeah, you gotta hide. Why can't the whole, put this in the house or attach it to the house or do something? Why does it have to be on the street?
I mean, it, it's on the street because it was all, already on the street. It was never part of the project. I mean, that's why it was here. It, it could have.
Did the original homeowner have a meter on the street like that? The house, the older house that you guys?
The original house did not. There was, they lived in that, they bought the house and they upgraded that, they upgraded their power without. Without uh, our involvement. They upgraded power and that's when this got located there. And that happened separate from. From um, you know, separate from our involvement.
Me and you are involved, meaning you, it was architectural from your side.
Yeah, the, the relocation of that, the, the relocation of that meter was separate from. From this uh, project that we evolved. We did an earlier project with them for the house. And uh, it was abandoned during um, COVID. And when they abandoned that project, uh, that, that was withdrawn and they decided to live in the house instead. And as part of them living in the house, instead, they upgraded the meter. I mean, they upgraded.
So it's someone like trying to do that, right? The electrical work and they have to get a permit, I would think, from the village for that.
Yeah, they, they got a permit from the electrician. They, that permit went to the village and the village uh, approved. And that permit was closed out before we started this project. So again, the change that we made was to put that cable underground.
So did the village approve the placement of that meter on, on the street like that?
Yeah, uh, yes, yeah, they did. But they didn't approve the, you know, the power drop and. And putting the, you know, the cable under, underground.
No, in order to, did they approve that meter being there?
Uh, I don't know if the meter was part of that. I'd have to look at the electrical, you know, the electrical.
Plus, they could have, right, they could have approved the fact that they're gonna run the cable, it's gonna go underground. And then now you need to approve all the box, right?
I'm assuming that it's approved because it was, it was already, the per- the permit was closed out. So that's why I'm assuming that.
An assumption, not evidence, yeah.
I go by Fargo often, um, and I've watched the progress of the home. And I, you know, and I, and I noticed that, that the meter is on that piece of plywood. I, I was, I, was my impression that it was always, that was just sort of temporary. Like when you see like a construction site and they bring power in for a temporary setup. I thought that that was just a, a temporary setup. That was just my, my opinion and observations the last few years.
Right.
I, I'd like to, um, I like to suggest this gets adjourned because I like to look at these, the, the political purposes that were called and see what was actually approved by the village. Because quite frankly, I, I, I don't, I don't like the notion of approving that thing, quite frankly.
Also, would it be helpful for us to show you renderings of what it would look like, you know, with the, with the mitigation that we propose?
Well, number one is I'm not so convinced that you can't. Fashion something where that's no longer there.
Well, you, you, you can, you can. It's just, it's just the money associated with it. You can always, you could always relocate it.
So make the decision to do it this way because maybe it's cheaper for them. Uh, I don't know the answer to that. I just threw that out there, but. Uh, to have a meter like that, sitting on a public street. Um. Uh, uh, again, I'd like to do some more homework on this. I'd like to put it over and if there's alternatives, I'd like you to explore the alternatives to getting that meter off the street, quite frankly. That's just my opinion. I don't know if anybody else has a similar opinion or doesn't want to express any opinion. It's only three of us, you know, so you need a, you need a majority. Um, but I'm just giving you my, my view on that. I, I think that you really should show us that there are, there was no other alternative than to leave it there. Because that really is.
So I, I think what we can, what we can show you is, we can show you. Uh, there is always an alternative, right? It's always money. We can show you, you know, what the cost would be associated with relocating it. And then we can show you uh, clear what the impact would be of leaving it in place. I mean, we can provide that.
I respect the fact that it's, it's on the ground. That's great. That, that's fine. But I'm not so convinced that box and that meter has to sit there like that on the public way, right way. Basically, we're close to it. Um, it doesn't appear anywhere else like that, village. And I, I just. I like to look at it again, like you look.
It, it is, it isn't, it is uh, it is not uncommon. And I think it is in other. Projects. I know there's a project right now that Patty Stein Schneider is doing that was recently approved, uh, Holsey Pond. Where the, the meter is on the pole at the property line edge. I don't know if they requested a variance for that, but there is other examples of this condition.
He was to have his forest last month and he didn't ask for variance on that, so. I would have had the same opinion, I think.
Does that property have a final C L? No, no. Alright, so John, is, is electric the only utility coming in through there?
Uh, at that point, yeah. There is, there is um, you know, water and sewer coming through this section here underground.
What about internet, telephone, cable?
Yeah, that's all, that's all coming into that location and then coming underground to a riser on the pole, yeah.
So gas is coming in as well as electric at that spot?
Uh, no, uh, gas is, gas, uh, there's a propane actually condition over here and then there's gas coming through the front yard further to the north.
So then it's just a, it's just electric that's coming in at that point?
Yep, directly into the house from that point.
It's coming off the pole, down the conduit, right on the ground.
Right.
It's not, it's not, right, that's not the problem for me. Um. So if you could, I'd, I'd like to do whatever you wanted to, obviously, but I like to see uh, all the alternatives and the cost. As you said. For next, for next, and you'll have more than me next, there'll be one, three of us, so.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll put together, I'll, I'll put together the cost of what would be to relocate it and then I will put together. Uh, better renderings to show you the impact of it. Cause I, you know, I just showed you a picture of the thing like you're standing face to face with it.
And the, other than the, the house on Holsey you just mentioned, the new, the new building going up. Do you, we're just speaking at any other location in the, in the village like this?
Uh, I'm just, I'm just aware of that one and I know it's, it's sort of a common thing in high-end. Homes, uh, that you would have a remote meter on a pedestal away from the house. Um, but.
But I would think it's, it's somewhere on the property, right? Where someone could look at it without being in, in the face of, of public. That, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually, they're usually, like, we just did one in, in Bronxville. They're usually near the property line, but they're screened. You know, they're screened with plantings. So this, the, the problem with this one is it's not screened. Um, but, but we have a plan to do that, so.
Theoretically, it could be someplace. Closer to the house or where, and I get them electrician, I don't know that, but where. Where the, the, it enters into the house, maybe something pops up there and they could read it from there. Maybe they can do electronically.
They, the reading, the reading of it's not a problem. Uh, alright, I think they could read it from anywhere. I don't think that it's, it's more like. Um, I think it's just to have that. Uh, I'm trying to think, mo- you know, mostly we do pedestal mounts when we do higher-end homes, cause there's like a, like a utility. Sort of farm where HVAC equipment and pedestals are all further out towards the, you know.
And they can't put this inside the house? John, they can't put it in the house?
They, they could. I think it, it would be a real struggle right now because the line is underground. So the relocation of the meter. I mean, there still has, there will always have to be a box at the pole, whether the meter's inside the house or outside the house. There's a junction box at the pole. So the only piece of equipment that could really be removed is the meter. Uh, because every, a drop has to have a junction box cut off at the pole, I think.
That's, that's important you just said. So you're saying.
Yeah, sorry. I, I should have brought that up before you. There, there are always when, right, when somebody drops down the pole, it, it definitely needs a. A box at that pole, so.
You sure about that? You know, by Legend Hollow, I know that it goes from the lines down in the ground. Look at that when I go home tonight.
Oh, there, it, there could be what's called a property line box, which could be below grade. There could, right, this whole meter assembly could be put into something below grade, I suppose.
Right.
That's something that they do.
Maybe they would, maybe your client should do that too. Anyway, we'll, uh, we'll look for you next month.
Okay, alright.
Thank, thank you. I guess that concludes the activities for the season. Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we may want to adjourn this one. I apologize. Thank you.
One, I second.
Thank you.
We're off.
Yes, sir.
So.